Good evening, everyone. I now call to order the regular board meeting of the Rio Grande City Gruia ISD School Board. The time is 6:31 PM. This meeting was properly posted on September 3rd, 2025 at 4:00 PM. We will begin with roll call. Veronica Barreira, present. Mr. Rene Peña, absent. Mr. Eduardo Ramirez.
Present.
Mr. Noi Castillo, absent. Ms. Patsy Garcia.
Present.
Mr. Jesse Solis.
Present.
And Mr. Basilio Verrieras Jr.
Present.
And Ms. Guadalupe.
Present.
Thank you. We will now move on to Section 3 Invocation led by Mr. Eric Ramirez.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to gather tonight with one purpose, to serve the students, employees, and families of our GCGISD. We ask for your hand of protection over the health and safety of our students, our staff, and our entire community. Bless our parents for their trust and support, our educators for their passion and dedication, and our district leaders for their guidance. May every decision made here tonight reflect the discernment with the commitment to serve the very best interest of all entrusted to our care. In your precious name, we pray.
Amen. Thank you. Now, Section 4 Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Jesse Solis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. Section 5 Reports and Information. Item 8 Accountability Rating for 2025 presented by Ms. Armelinda Yala Rios.
Good evening, members of the Board. Board President, Ms. Garza, Superintendent of Schools. Yeah, I'm a little under the weather, but it's better than last time, I promise. Okay, so I'm going to present to you the 2025 Accountability Ratings for our school So, for 2025, we were rated as a school district with a B rating. So this is our actual rating for 2025. I'm going to, I'm showing you a summary of how we earned our B rating. As you can see, we scored an overall 82. We did not get a distinction designation, which is the post-secondary readiness. That's the only distinction designation as a school district that we can possibly get. Our goal, of course, is to receive an A as a district and to receive the post-secondary, secondary distinction, I'm sorry. And for that distinction, it's a collaboration on the post-secondary readiness for all our campuses. I also included, over the years, our overall ratings. In 2023, in the last presentation I did give, we had a 79, which is a letter grade of a C. For 2024, that they just released, at the same time that they released the 2025 ratings, we scored an 83, which is a B. And for 2025, we scored an 82, which is a B. And these are our ratings over the past three years. I'm going to go into the ratings for each one of our campuses. Our, for Rio High School, our overall rating was a B, and they did get three distinctions: Academic Achievement in Reading Language Arts, Academic Achievement in Science, Academic Achievement in Social Studies, out of seven possible ratings. And they account for 1,667 students at their campus. For Gruia High School, their overall rating was an 86, which was a B. They did get two distinctions: Academic Achievement in Mathematics, top 25% in comparative closing the gaps, which is 700, and they have 714 students in 2025. And for Early College High School, they did earn an A, which was a 97, and they did get only one distinction, which was the post-secondary readiness. And their campus was at an average of 130 students. One of the disclosures I do want to make for our high schools when it comes to the rating, graduation rate and CCMR play a huge role for the ratings at these campuses. And one of the things that I do want to say is that CCMR lags a year. So these are for our, it's their 2025 ratings, but they're for our 2024 graduates that also earned CCMR. So that's why, didn't say way pretty heavily in different domains. This is why our schools are able to score so well, because we do do very well in CCMR. So we're hoping that for next year, we'll have good ratings. But one of the disclosures I do want to say as well is that in 2025, our CCMRs, our students had to be completers for CCMR, and that was a little difficult for our kids to get done, complete, since most of our points do come from the CTE program. But I know that we're working closely with our principals to see how we can leverage off of other areas so that we can ensure that we get a better rating for next year. Our middle schools, Gruia Middle School did have a score of a 79, which was a letter C, with one distinction designation, which is post-secondary readiness. All their students' counts for accountability, which was 632 students. Ringo Middle School had an 82, which is a letter B. They did have two distinction designations: Academic Achievement in Science and post-secondary readiness, and their student count was 639. Veterans Middle School did score an 82, which is a letter B, with two distinction designations in Academic Achievement in Science and Academic Achievement in Social Studies, with 734 students enrolled in their campuses. So here, for our middle schools, CCMR graduation rates don't take, don't go into account. It's just their overall star performance of how they do, and of course, their academic growth in closing the gaps. For our elementary campuses, I'm going to start off with General Ricardo Sanchez Elementary. They had 93, they scored an A. There are six possible distinctions that an elementary campus can get. This campus got five of them: Academic Achievement in Reading Language Arts, Academic Achievement in Mathematics, top 25% comparative academic growth, post-secondary readiness, top 25% comparative closing the gaps. So General Sanchez got an A with a 93. Gruia Elementary scored an 89, which they got a B, but they also got five distinction designations: Academic Achievement in Reading Language Arts, Academic Achievement in Mathematics, Academic Achievement in Science, top 25% comparative academic growth, and post-secondary readiness. Ringo Elementary had a score of an 85, which is a B. That is, they got two distinction designations with achievement in science and post-secondary Dr. Mario I. Ramirez Elementary scored an 84, which is a B, with two distinction designations: Academic Achievement in Mathematics and post-secondary readiness. Alto Bonito scored an 84, and with one distinction designation, which is achievement in science. John and Olive Elementary, you know, John and Olive Inojosa Elementary scored a 74, which is a letter C, with one distinction designation, which is achievement in science. Then we have Roque Guerra Jr. Elementary with a 73, which is a C, with no distinction designations. La Union Elementary with a 71, with no distinction designations. And Alberto Encelia Barrera with a 55, which is an F, with no distinction designations. I do want to make it clear to our school board that we've already reached out and we've already met with all our campuses in need, and we are closely working together with the, through the different directors and the different departments, and trying to make sure that our scores do improve for the upcoming school year. So I listed the overall scores for the past three years for every campus, and the star, of course, designates the 2025 overall ratings. So as you can see, you have the 23, 22, 23 ratings in the far right, and at, when we were in 2023, we did have two campuses identified with, as Fs, but the state, again, remember that these scores had not been released, so no, they were not held responsible for anything at that particular year. But I do, there is a caveat to that, because in 2023, we have two campuses that were F campuses, they are placed in a peg list for this school year, and that's the only reason why they are in the peg list. For 2024, as you can see, all the schools improved. Those Fs went up to Ds and Cs, as you can see that, which was John and Olive and La Union Elementary. So they had significant improvement in 2024, and as most of our campuses did, and we actually had, from 1A in 2023, we had three As in the, in all our schools in 2024. But in 2025, we regressed with one campus that we did get an F, but we had no Ds, and as you can see in the previous school year, we had a couple of Ds, but in 2025, we had zero Ds. But we did have just one F, and we do have, we have four Cs, nine Bs, and two As. So I think that is still a big congratulations to our school district, because I'm also, I'm going to show you how we compare to the state and to the region when it comes to the number, or the percentages for each one of our letter grades. Our schools did well, but we do have one school, which is Alberto Encelia Barrera Elementary, who was identified for school improvement as a comprehensive support and improvement school, because they were rated an F. And we, we have one school that is an additional targeted support, which is John and Olive Elementary Inojosa. So if you noticed that from our previous meetings, they've been awarded several Lasso awards, because they were already part of a target support. So that's what we're hoping, that we're going to be hopefully leveraging off some more monies as the new grants come about. And for targeted support and improvement, we have La Union Elementary, and we also have Ringo Middle School. And I know this was kind of hard. This has to do with closing the gap, which is our last domain, and this is where the federal government takes place and says, okay, where are we and how are our subgroups scoring in certain indicators? And since we, for the past three years, in certain areas, like for example, for Ringo Middle School, where the continuously enrolled, but there were three indicators where they fell short on for three consecutive years. And we're closely monitoring that for all our other campuses as well, so that we can make sure that no one falls into school improvement as we move forward. So how do we do in comparison when it comes to our ratings with Region 1 and the state? So I put percentages here. So as far as As, we had two As, which was a 13% for our school district. Region 1 was at a 32%, and the state was at a 23.9%. Bs, I'm, I was, I'm very pleased that we showed 53%, because those were nine of our campuses, and when we compare to the region and to the state, we are at a 41 and a 35. And I just recently attended a meeting with Region 1, and their goal, Dr. King's goal, as he mentioned to everyone in the audience, was he wants everyone to be at a C or higher. So I was very happy that we're above them when it comes to the letter B, at least percentage-wise. For letter C, we were, had four campuses at a 26.7%. Region 1 had 17 campuses, I mean, 17%, and the state was at a 25%. So again, we're also over the mark when it comes to the letter C as well. For Ds, we had a 0%, we had zero Ds in our school district. There was 7.3% in the region and 11% in the state. And unfortunately, you know, we only have 15 schools that we compare to. One of them was an F, that's a 6.7%, but Region 1 was at a 1.6, and the state was at a 4.7. But our, it's very, very doable for this next upcoming school year, where we're going to totally get out of that, that grade level and move forward. So this concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Yes, I have a few, Ms. Yala. Let me start off with, do you know what the percentage, graduation rate were for all the three high schools by any chance?
Our graduation rate was close to 99% for all our three, except for early college was 100%.
Okay, how about a CCMR percentage?
In CCMR, they averaged over 93% graduates, and that's one of the conversations we did have this Saturday. We did have, I did have a training with all the high schools, explaining to them the accountability and how that works, because we look at CCMR, but they need to understand that CCMR works as the number of graduates that we have that particular school year. And looking at that, as a matter of fact, I already pulled out a report for one of our principals. She's like, take me, take me the numbers, because if I'm not going to make it in 2025, I want to make sure that, where else can we move forward? So everybody's fully aware, and the sense of urgency is there in all our campuses. I do want to rest everybody assured of that, just so that you know that we are working very closely with our campuses.
I got two more questions. Ringo Middle School, they got an A-B. Why would they be in target support if they got to be?
They are in target support because of the continuously enrolled students, which are our students who have been with us continuously, year after year after year, fell short according to the state with certain indicators. One of them, for sure, was in mathematics. They didn't, they have to score at meets or better, so we had those kids that fall under that particular, that particular target, which is the continuously enrolled, for the past three years, 23, 24, 25, they did not meet the mark. And so again, it also goes with academic growth, it also goes with delpas, it also goes with, with the school quality, and the school quality, that one is, where all the students, they take the, they take the approaches meets masters from all the students that tested in English, in reading math, science, and social studies at middle schools, and that component score plays a big role in that domain. And if they don't meet the mark for the three consecutive years and in three different levels, they're automatically considered target support.
Last two questions I have. First of all, I think the, the schools did tremendously well. Most of them went up, and I congratulate all the principals and all the parents and everybody for doing well. The only sticker in all this is, I have a problem, you know, when all the schools do well, you have As, you have Bs, you have Cs, but they're still doing well, but that, that F kind of sticks out tremendously. And let me ask, what are we going to do to make sure that that F comes up? Because, think about it, we got As, we got Bs, As in elementary, and I compliment Ms. Carmona, we have Bs in high school. We did tremendously well, a couple of Cs, but that F just doesn't sit right.
So one of the things that we're doing as a school district right now, I know Ms. Garza was very, very adamant and moving forward as assigning mentors to these schools. So we are mentoring these campuses. They do have some new, they have, they have new administration in those campuses, especially like in our F campus, and Ms. Carmona is now joining us in our team here at the district, and she will be mentoring Alberto Encelia. So a lot of the practices that she did have, that's why we're pretty confident that that, for sure, that that'll help us go up. But we all closely look at how they did overall, and we're really looking at it through a fine comb tooth and saying, what are the areas that we can improve on? So we are looking at improvement for that campus, and the only thing we can do is move up, and that's the way I see it.
Again, I think the schools did tremendously well, and the only sticker would be that, but I congratulate, I guess, every, all the administration, principals, teachers, and everybody. They had a fantastic job.
And I, yeah, great. I do, I do want to just make sure you all know that we are working very, very closely with all our campuses, and we're not going to leave anybody behind, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we move on to Section 6. Do we have any public comments on agenda items, Ms. Garcia? None? Thank you. Section 7 Consent Agenda. Were consent agenda on items for consent items listed on the agenda that were previously discussed and presented at the board workshop? At this time, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through W?
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented, that consists of items 7A through 7W.
Do I have a second?
Madam President, there was an addendum, and I have just one question, and the addendum, it was not included in the workshop. The addendum, just real simple.
The 5,000 and over?
Yeah, the one, they gave us an addendum after the, the work session. And I just wanted to know, we're re-roofing for $106,000. Did we take bids on that by any chance, ma'am?
Did we, did we what again, Mr. Viaria?
Did we take bids on it? It's $106,000, and our policy says that anything above $50,000, or how do we do it, could I ask?
No, I don't think the policy states, I'm not mistaken, they are from by-board or, not necessarily by-board. Ms. Peña, you're here.
Well, that's not one of them. They're from by-board.
So they do belong to one of those co-ops, and that is the reason, Mr. Viaria, that we decided to go with this company.
Okay, if they're from the co-op, the next question I have, are they bonded, basically?
Are they what?
Bonded.
They should be, yes. Ms. Peña, you can come forward, ma'am, thank you.
That's an, it's a by-board, not a problem, but the next question I have is, are they bonded, simply put?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Ms. Garza. And yes, sir, they are a co-op, so it is such as by-board, they are tipped. So we did go out, you know, with the best possible quotes for these routes.
Just make sure they're bonded, because if they're bonded and the project, they leave it halfway, the bond kicks in, so I would recommend that you get a copy of the bond or make sure they have a bond, because the, the size of the project literally requires a bond, so just make sure they have one.
And normally with by-board, they are typically bonded, but go ahead and get that documentation, please.
Thank you.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peña.
There's been a motion and a second, so now you can. Yeah, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes. Section 8 Finance. Consider and take possible action on P. Application Statement 1 from Design Group International for Food Service Warehouse Payne Warehouse.
Madam President, I move that we table this item.
Do I have a second? Mr. Jesse? Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign, motion passes. Section 9 Office of Human Resources, item 9A, consider and take possible action, I'm sorry, section 9 Office of Human Action, item 8, possible action on updating policy FFA local.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Schools, Ms. Garza. This policy was not in our policy review as, as approved on our consent agenda. This, this policy stands on its own. It's what we refer to as the School Health Advisory Committee, the SHAC Committee. So we're just updating this policy, it's procedural, so administration recommends approval as presented.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I still move, Madam President.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Section 10 Curriculum and Instruction, item 10A, consider and take possible action on Imagine Learning Edge Annuity Program for school year 25, 26.
So good evening once again. We're asking for permission to continue our services with Imagine Learning Edge Annuity Program for the school year 20, 25, 26. This is the Edge Annuity Program that our kids use for credit recovery, and we'll be also using it for our new lead center for all our 18-plus students as they're coming in, so that they can make sure that they earn all their high school credits.
Thank you. All right, can I have a motion to approve item 10A as presented?
I still move.
Second. Any discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10B, consider and take possible action on CareerCraft platform for CCMR data center and CTE monitor.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to present on the CareerCraft platform for CCMR. We have this platform for the past two years for free through a grant, so that grant ended August 31st, and I'm reviewing it with Ms. Garza. We reviewed it and showed her how it works. It shows all the indicators, so you're able to go in and see all the CCMR indicators and see where their students at, easier to track, for the counselors to use for CCMR tracking.
And the cost is $8,000 roughly?
Yes, $7,753, which is pretty good. Because there are some, some programs out there, they're like $60,000, so this is very, very affordable.
Very good.
And you all have been using this, or it's going to be your first time to use it?
This will be, if we keep it, it's our third year. It'll be our third year.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I still move.
Second. Any questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes. Thank you. Item 10C, consider and take possible action on Purple Cord for CCMR Achievement TSI 8.
Okay, this one, I'm proposing to you, for you all, to approve a distinction or honor for graduation for students to wear for TSI, and encourage, something to encourage students to, of course, complete the TSI, and if you all approve it, so students who complete the TSI, you know, they pass the ELO and the math, they're able to wear a purple cord at graduation. So it's very cost-effective, it's something to motivate students to, to earn that, so they can wear that at graduation, and starting with the class of 2026.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve item 10C as presented?
I still move.
A second? Any further discussion or questions? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 10D, consider and take possible action on Project L3 American History and Civics Education Grant.
Good evening, Dr. Barrera, Board President, Ms. Garza, Superintendent, and Board members. This item is a request for approval of stipend payments for our social studies teachers who participated in summer professional development sessions as part of the Project L3 American History and Civics Grant. All stipends will be paid fully through the Project L3 grant, no local funds will be used. Administration respectfully recommends approval of this request.
Mr. Rodriguez, how's, how's it determined as to who gets to, to go to these?
It's open for all of our social studies teachers in the district, and they decide if they want to.
And so I see that only veterans and preparatory, early college, then they come back, and are they going to meet with the other middle schools and high schools?
Typically, yes, ma'am, and then whatever it's that they learn, they implement in the classroom as well. They do collaborate with them.
And the stipends, I think, just to put them out, it's 300 for those that went for a full day, 200 for those that went for a half day.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve item 10D as presented?
I still move.
Can I have a second? Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes. Thank you. Item 10E, consider and take possible action on Professional Development for GT State Compliance.
Good evening, Dr. Barrera, Madam President, members of the board, Ms. Garza, Superintendent. The Gifted and Talented Department is seeking permission to, an approval to bring Responsive Learning, which is a company that provides online training, to be able to comply with the state in providing the 30 hours that teachers need, if they're new, and then those that already have the 30 hours, they just need a six-hour subsidy.
So it's, it's 30 hours, and then teachers and counselors, six hours, correct?
That is correct.
Minimum.
Administrators, it only requires six hours, and then those teachers that already, already have the 30 hours, they just have to make up six hours on a yearly basis.
And the cost is $33,000, $33,450?
That, that is correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve item 10E as presented?
I still move.
Can I have a second? Any questions, discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Thank you. Item 10F, consider and take possible action at RGC GISD Gifted and Talented District Handbook.
Yes, Madam President, and this item, the state revised the, the state guidelines in September 2024, and the handbook had not been updated since 2019, so I'm bringing to you the, the handbook with the proper revisions, including the local district policy for gifted and talented.
I have a question, Mr. Martinez. Is there any way of bringing the handbook a little, they presented it, it's quite thick for us to read it, and a board meeting is tough. Maybe next time they can include it in the packet, so we can see it before we come to the board meeting.
Yes, sir. Yeah, because I know it was revised in September 2024, so I'm curious as to what was revised, and if I ask you, it's probably a lot of stuff.
Basically, what they revised, sir, is they, they went with the hours, you know, that to make sure that they were in compliance with providing the hours that the teachers need, and also the state, the policy for the districts was also revised, and so there had to be some, you know, they, they had to update that policy. And so the policy was updated, and I included it in here for you all. And the rest is just the forms that we're in compliance with what the state requires.
And this is a, no, no cost to the district?
There's no cost to the district. I just wanted to get permission, you know, from you all, so that it can be distributed to the campus administration.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve item 10F as presented?
I still move.
Can I have a second? If no further discussion or questions, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes. Item 10G, consider Item 10G, consider and take possible action on Strong Foundations Implementation TA Region One.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Superintendent Ms. Garza. So we are seeking approval to engage in technical assistance services from Region One, which is funded through the Strong Foundations Implementation Grant to support K5 math and HQIM implementation efforts. We're already in a contract with them, with the JNO. This is now extending it to the rest of the campuses.
What is Strong Foundation, just?
It's the implementation to implement the curriculum that we have, the HQIM, the Bluebonnet. So through the Lasso, we got the, this is the 1 million that we got with Strong Foundations.
So it's to implement the curriculum?
Yes. So Region One has been coming in. Every six weeks, they're going to come in and meet with our, the math teachers per grade level on designated days, and then the reading the following week so as to review upcoming lessons, internalize them, and help support the teachers.
So it's particularly for math reading and writing, I guess, for math and reading only?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve item 10G as presented?
I still move.
Can I have a second? No other questions, discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10H, consider and take possible action on Enhanced Library Personal Professional Development.
Says Ricardo Solis, I don't know, you hesitated.
Yes, I was going to call him.
Good evening, and Board President, members of the board, Superintendent Ms. Garza. We're requesting permission in regards to the fact of, for, to take considerate action in the Enhanced Library Professional Professional Consideration of the Development. It'll be for the school year on there, and we're working closely with all librarians at every campus, and they are working closely with all district personnel as well.
The way I read it, this is to, I guess, improve device management protocol, and then to go to two sessions?
That is correct. They'll be doing two sessions, one's for device management, another one will be going as we are, like instead of IQ as well, representing twice. One will be done in the fall, two of them will be done in the fall, two of them will be done in the spring. And each one will be paid out in December and in May as well, sir.
Stipend is a thousand stipend, and we have 15 librarians?
Correct. And right now, we only have 12, 13 librarians at the moment right now, because we do have some openings.
Through, through a grant?
Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions, discussion? Can I have a motion to approve item 10H as presented?
I still move.
Can I have a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10I, consider and take possible action on MOU between Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas and RGC GISD for school year '25-'26.
Good evening, Madam President, Board President, Ms. Guadalupe Garza, Superintendent of Schools, and our members here present today and our audience listening. This is an MOU that is a yearly renewal of the Behavioral Solutions of South Texas. This is no cost to the district. This is something that is initiative and support system for our students and our staff. So we are asking for your approval in renewal of our MOU for our Behavioral Health Solutions of South Texas.
No cost to our district, I would imagine?
No.
There's no cost to the, they use our services, our building. All right, so move, Madam President.
All right, can I have a second? Any other questions, thank you, or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes. Thank you. Section 11, Special Services Department will continue Section 11, items A through B. Item 11A, consider and take possible action on MOU between Umos Migrant Seasonal Head Start and RGC GISD for school year '25-'28.
Yeah, so good evening, Dr. Barrera, School Board President, Board Members, Ms. Guadalupe Garza, Superintendent of Schools, and ladies and gentlemen. This agreement between United Migrant Opportunity Service Seasonal Head Start Program, known as UMOs, and Rio Grande City Gruya ISD establishes procedures for providing services to preschool children ages three to five who are suspected of having a disability or are eligible for special education and related services. Both agencies are mandated to serve children with disabilities. Through this partnership, we'll coordinate efforts to identify, refer, and serve eligible children in compliance with federal and state law.
Have we, have we used this program before?
Yes, we have, and we do have two locations, one in Las Lomas and one at Alto Bonito. Currently in Las Lomas, there's no students, but at Alto Bonito, we do have two students that are currently being served.
I think it's a great cause, very good cause.
Any other questions, discussion? Do I have a motion to approve item 11A as presented?
I still move.
Second? If no other questions or comments, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes. Thank you. Item 11B, consider and take possible action on Child Find, Child Serve Agreement for school year '25-'26.
So the Child Find, Child Serve Agreement is an agreement between Region One Education Service Center and Rio Grande City Gruya ISD for the '25-'26 school year to ensure all activities are carried out in a timely manner as described by the, by the Individual Disabilities Education Act, known as IDEA, and the Service Special Education Programs, and the Texas Education Agency. Special Services Department respectfully submits and recommends for board approval.
This is mandated, right, Title 34?
Yes, it is.
And it's a thousand dollars?
Right, for printing.
All right, can I have a motion to approve item 11BS presented?
I still move.
Can I have a second? Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move on to Section 12, Executive Session for items A through H as listed on the posted agenda under Texas Government Code Sections 551071 through 76 and 551082 through 84. The time is now 7:08 PM, and we're now moving to executive session. All right, the time is now 8:16 PM, and we're back in open session. May I have a mo, well, no. Item A, discussion on possible action on personnel, there's no action. Item B, discussion on possible action on resignations, retirements of existing personnel.
Madam President, I move that we approve item B as discussed in executive session, and I will abstain as discussed, in more particular item myself, in executive.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Barrera, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And motion passes. Would you be abstaining?
Abstain, just on that one, one item, it was one resignation.
The one resignation.
Yes.
Item C, consider and take possible action on the superintendent's recommendations concerning administrative personnel included, but not limited to certified and non-certified administrators and certain chief and director's level positions.
Madam President, I move that we approve item C as discussed in executive session.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes. Item D, discussion on possible action matters related to student expulsions.
I move that we approve item D as discussed in the second session.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Level three grievance, item DE, on DGPA hearing requested by Ms. Lorena Garza.
Madam President, I move that the board take no action on item E.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
Give me a second.
A second. Second, Jesse, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion passes, sorry. Now, level three grievance F and G hearing by Ms. Anna Gonzalez.
Madam President, I move that the board take no action with regards to item F.
Can I have a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. Item G, consider and take possible action to approve facility lease agreement between Rio Grande Gruya School District and the City of Rio Grande for the lease of district-owned real property at Ford Ringo, specifically the pool and park facility to authorize the superintendent to take all necessary steps to finalize and execute the agreement.
I move that we approve item G as discussed in the second session.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes. And item H, consider and take possible action to approve facility lease agreement between Rio Grande City Gruya ISD and the City of Rio Grande for the lease of district-owned real property near Ford Ringo, specifically the old fire station, and to authorize the superintendent to take all necessary steps to finalize and execute the agreement.
Madam President, I move that we approve item H as discussed in the second session.
Second. Ms. Patsy, all those in favor, raise your right hand, and motion passes. We now move to Section 14, Public Comments on Non-Agenda Items. Ms. Gonzalez, do we have anybody signed up? No, thank you. Announcements for upcoming events.
Madam President, I'd like just to invite everyone that we will be having the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the new center, which is called the LEED Center, and this is for all our 18- to 26-year-olds. So we will be having that on September the 22nd at 9:00 AM.
All right, thank you. That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Being there's no further items on the agenda, I now declare this meeting adjourned at 8:20 PM. Thank you, and have a great evening.